So, yes. I believe it has, because I think Darrell's taking care of it. Going to the different courthouses, we often see police memorials that are really there. They're more than just our bell, perhaps. And I think now that we're redoing the plaza as it is, this may be the appropriate time to look at the Public Arts Commission and ask them to begin looking at a true sheriff, police, fire memorial in front of the courthouse or off to the side here in the plaza area since it's being redone. They're doing one right now in Chesapeake that is just phenomenal.
You know, there's a wonderful area that is, you know, on the other side of the tracks that is sort of a U-shaped area. We've got landscaping in here. We don't have anything planned for it. That might be --
Well, I just think it's something --
Citizens -- okay.
It's, I mean, I don't know.
I hear you.
If you go to every city hall around, Hampton's got something down, just down in front of their police, in front of their downtown police precinct. Chesapeake's got a beautiful one at the Courthouse City Hall complex. It may be, I think it's time.
You know, we moved ours because of the blight rail track.
Yeah, oh, I knew that. I knew that. But I think we can make it more modern and bigger, a real monument. And what I'm thinking of is a monument, one that would have perhaps the statue of a police officer, statue of a firefighter, statue of a sheriff, something to that effect, life-size that really catches the eye, has, you can put fountain, flame, something that keeps it eternal, whatever it is, but something like that. I know Darrell's working on it, but I wanted to put that out there. It's something that for all of us to put in the back of our heads, because I think in the near future we need to deal, it'd be nice to be able to deal with that in a very positive manner downtown.
Our experience with fountains is that it's not an eternal.
If you want it eternal, we better go with the flame.
I said flame.
That's the truth. Okay. Mr. Wynn.
What are we doing? It's our account. I don't care. The only thing I would ask again is can we please bring the no kill policy or can we get in front of the council and get a report?
It's going to be at the end of this month to the committee, yes.
It seems to me to be a reasonable thing that our citizens are requesting. We're having a hard time getting to it.
We're going to give all the letters, we'll get in.
We're going to put them on your front yard.
Yes.
That's all I have.
There is a constituency, and so, let's say our citizens, I mean, there's a --
Well, I think the concern is, I don't think anybody, we've talked about this before, and you have four council members now that are, I don't know, you guys get in letters too?
Yeah, we all get letters.
Okay, all right. But that --
It's a good idea.
That it's not that our, we realize there's some restrictions, there's some issues right now with our current animal center. The problem is that we're not being as progressive as we probably could be, and there's tons of models in Virginia on what our animal center could be doing. It's easy to say, oh yeah, we've, we're showing some growth in this area, but I was pointing out beforehand that I think it was Alexandria, I was reading an article, they're taking in all their feral cats, neutering or spaying them, and then they release them. It doesn't require anything. They partnered with, you know, different organizations to do the neutering and spaying, and they put them back out on the street, you know, and they have permission to do that.
They'll all be running alert.
And seriously, so that you don't have to take them in, it doesn't require resources, and you don't have more kitties. And since we have bunnies, now we can have bunnies, you know?
Okay, I'm going to stop it right there. We will have bunnies, chickens and all that. We'll schedule time, manager's going to bring it back, and we'll have a full-blown discussion. Some of you guys know more about what other cities are doing than the rest of us do.
I'd like to have you releasing their old cats and then I --
Okay. Park said it?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Just really quickly, I'm interested in perhaps expanding on the recycling program in our downtown areas and at our businesses. When you think about all the waste in just bottles and cans alone in our restaurants, we ought to be able to have a way that recycling is available. Do we recycle in this building?
Yes.
That it's picked up then by the city, or who picks it up?
By the custodian state, yes.
And taken some of it?
My trash can, that I can put anything that's not recycled is this big.
So, I just feel like, and I think John Dool has been approached on that, I just hope that we could get administrative support behind trying to work toward that. The downtown civic league is interested, as I think many of our downtowners are. And then, you know, when I say this for downtown, but clearly it should be for all of our businesses, not just the ones downtown. And then, lastly, I appreciate getting an email from Darrell today. We have some real issues with some of our empty school buildings, particularly Stewart, with vandalism and destruction, and even if we didn't value the value of the property, you know, it's a real eyesore. And so, I'm glad to hear that we're looking at or sending out an RFP for what we would anticipate for emptied school buildings, school property, am I right? So, I hope that'll be on our agenda soon to talk about, because I really think that's an issue we need to address quickly.
I agree.
Yeah, that's good.
A couple of things. You know, we spent a lot of time and energy, a few summers ago, myself and Mr. Freeman, going back and forth to Richmond for this blight legislation. And to date, we continue to allow folk to build what I perceive to be substandard housing in these fragile neighborhoods, which in a few years it will become blight again. In the early 60s and 70s, they went into some of these communities and put these apartments buildings sideways, right in the heart of single-family dwellings. Today, we're not allowing them to put the apartment buildings in there, but we're allowing them to build houses that are investment properties that have no windows on either side, you know, upstairs and one window downstairs. Now, we create overlay districts, we have all of this, we have all of this ability to stop folk from doing this, and me and Barclay went back and forth as it relates to 25-foot lots, and we were able to come up with reasonable standards as it relates to non-conforming lots. But what is happening now is that on 50-foot lots, we're starting to see the same thing in some of these fragile neighborhoods. So, for me, it can't be for none, and it has to be a way. If we create overlay districts that, if we could control what businesses do, then we got to be able to control what, from a residential standpoint, stop the bleeding in terms of the same communities that we've spent a lot of time and energy to resuscitate, now we're having to go back in and deal with the same problem, and I hear from the planning department that there's nothing we can do. That's unacceptable. There has to be something that we can do as relates to that. If it's not, if we can't, then hell, we're going to lose that battle all over again. In another 10 years from now, we're going to be fighting that same tide, and we will never be able to impact some of these more fragile neighborhoods. And I was just a little disappointed when I talked to Frank, and I'm having to point out issues as it relates to certain properties or building homes on certain properties where we've created standards, whether it be setbacks or otherwise. And so, I just think that we just have to be a little more creative, and if we got to get back to, get back at the table again to define what it is that we're trying to accomplish, then we need to do that. I don't know if we're up to standard in terms of all the code or inspectors that we need to have, but I shouldn't have to ride around and see something and then give it to the planning commission, I mean, planning department, and they go out there and say, yeah, you're right, and then stop them from pulling the footing and then revamp that process. But it is unacceptable in terms of what I see happening out there, and I think we just have to do a little more about that. And I've had this conversation in terms of what you perceive to be blight and what I perceive to be blight may be something totally different. Now, I know what the interpretation of the code is, but at the end of the day, if the whole block is blighted, then I don't see blight. You know, all I see is just a whole block or a whole area that's conforming to what I see. But the reality of it is that whole block is ablighted, and there's code violations of that whole block. And so, to allow folk to build to what's there, it's wrong. We need to set the bar a little higher and set the standard for folk to come in and build according to what we're trying to drive that community to be in the future. And so, that is a real issue. And again, I hate to say it again, but to say that we can't do nothing about it is unacceptable, you know, to me. The second thing I want to say, I want to congratulate you, Paul. Yesterday, I just thought you did a tremendous job in terms of speaking for Uncle Pete. I know that he would be proud of the way that you utilized his memorial service yesterday. And I know you may be getting a lot of calls about what, you know, this city should do in memory or in honor of Uncle Pete, but I do know this for sure, that the one thing that I do know he deserved is a star on our Walk of Fame, you know, for the entertainment that he provided this community and the thousands, millions of dollars that he's raised for this community. And I just think that it's only fitting that his star be on Granby Street, because he was a star to all of us. Thank you.
I was going to go back.
And you were too.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. I had someone bring to my attention that there's not any recreational activities available for disabled, not necessarily youth, but those who may be between the ages of 21 and senior citizen age in the city. And I, she had, the person that brought that to my attention has a 30 or so-year-old disabled son, and she's unable to find recreational activities in the city for, in the city of Norfolk. She referenced that there was something in Virgin Beach, but that there was not anything in Norfolk. So, I just wanted to kind of find out if we could, if we don't have anything, could we possibly look into maybe, maybe looking at our rec centers or perhaps maybe our senior center, where folks may be more, better trained in those facilities to deal with people who are needing a little bit more extra care. Sure. But I told her I would just double-check and see where we were. But other than that, Ron's handled everything else that I've had.
Anthony was recommending a star, I was going to recommend a school, be named after Uncle Pete.
We got him. My suggestion is that we take some time, you know, you, something like a star, I think you could, you know, we ought to talk to the family about and then see, but --
Star is easy.
Yeah, but when you start talking about civic buildings and things like that, I think you need to give it a little, a little time, and nobody, certainly I, who's close to Pete is, you know, pretty close to, you know, so, we've heard, I've already heard suggestions about the airport, about schools, about, I mean, it's, we need to, we need to take a step back, I think, you know, because, anyway, I just think we, if we're going to do something, we need to do the right thing. You're probably not going to really completely appreciate what the right thing is for a while, I think, and so.
Whatever else you do, I think the stars should still be there.
I think the stars.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we can all have fun with that.
You call something, tell us not to debate over it. The Surry coal plant issue, I had asked a couple months ago about getting a presentation on that and then seeing if this council would be interested in taking a stance on that or resolution. I know some of our neighbor cities have, and I know that they're, I think that they've done some settlement with the issue with their council that approved it. Are we going to hear anything of it? I know it's probably not on the top of our list, but there is a constituency that has asked for our city to take a stance on the coal plant.
I would very much agree with that.
And the second thing is, the Ocean View Shopping Center down on Ocean View, it's managed by SL Nuzbaum. The civic league there had some concerns about how the property is being monitored for panhandlers, and I know panhandling is not illegal, but they wanted to ask if the city could help set up a meeting with the civic league and also the management group and talk about different strategies on what they can do to prevent, people don't want to shop there because of the amount of, and maybe homeless can get involved in it as well, so.
It also happens to be my partner, so I think it's a good example.
Yeah, right, yep. So, and I think that there's been an increase in the amount of activity over there, and they've just asked for some assistance from the city on making that connection. And then, just a, what do we do as, maybe Public Works needs to address this, but when you're driving down the road and you see some old poles, just metal poles come out of the ground with no signs on them, or signs that have faded and you can't read them anymore, do we have a regular crew or is there somebody that points those out and tries to update? I know we have our own sign-making capabilities now, but how often do we go through and update those? Or is there an easier way for citizens to point out? Do they, should they just call the call center and point out when they have that?
Well, let me talk with John. I don't see John in the room today. Let's, okay, let's just make, we'll get what process we have, share that with the council, and if that's something that's a good process, we'll start with that and see if we have to supplement it.
Just a beautification thing?
Sure it is. I think that's a really important point. It's the old, you see something, say something.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea if you had the time, this summer, maybe it was some of these summer kids that you had. I mean, a whole city could use a thorough census about taking down poles and signs and things that just, once they go up, they never come down. But, you know, you could, you could put a couple teams together and each one --
Make that competition.
There's so much of that stuff that just is not needed, and it's blight. I got two really simple things. At the corner of Magnolia and Hampton Boulevard, there've been some orange barrels on the sidewalk for months. There's a collapsed sidewalk there.
Yeah.
I don't know when we're going to get to it, but it's, they've literally been there for months. I wouldn't say anything if they hadn't been, but I, but, and then, on the southern foot of Hampton Boulevard, because I really pushed the administration when that tractor trailer turned over to put some calming devices, traffic calming devices, there are some strips. They're at least a half mile away, as you know, from where the tractor, you know, had to make the turn. I'm getting phone calls from people that's driving, those little strips that are, that are noise, you know, when the cars go over it, it rumbles, and it is --
Keeping people up at night.
It's keeping people up at night, and it's, you know, and if I really, they're just so far away from where we wanted to slow the trucks down that, and you could take two-thirds of them out of there. If the traffic engineer actually thought that would do some good, over a half mile and a couple stoplights away from where, you know, the accident occurred, it's, there are two stoplights. There's one in Magnolia, there's one at James Down Crescent. Shoot, there's another one before, there are three stoplights before you get to where we try to slow people down. So, but I know as people come off Hampton Boulevard, they're flying, I mean, off the bridge.
Coming off the bridge.
It's the bridge, they're coasting.
Right.
So, that was the idea.
Right.
But I think you could get rid of two-thirds of the rumble things, and you could keep the ones that are further down by the library, and, I don't know.
We addressed these rumble strips at the Larchmont Civic League, because there are two sets of them. There's one that goes all the way across the lane, and those are right there at the library.
That's, that's what --
And those are keeping everybody up all night. And then, there's another set that are wider, and so, if you've got a narrower car, you actually can avoid the strips and the, and it's tough, though. But anyway.
But those are okay.
But those aren't so bad. But John Stevenson was actually at that meeting, and they said that they were in the midst of looking at whether or not they were effective, and they knew that the neighbors were complaining about, so I, you know, I would share with the concern of that civic league, yeah.
I was a motorist.
But those, that wasn't for the trucks.
Marcus, you go over them every day.
Every day.
Just take them out of there.
And I leap over that, that orange cone when I jog. Not speaking for Public Works, but one of the thought, the thought process was, you come across that bridge, it gets your attention. But we can revisit all of us.
Well, and I think that's what John was going to, going to go ahead and do, because they said, after they put them in, everybody says, well, is it working? And of course, the consensus of the civic league was that it wouldn't work, and just keeping people up at night.
Okay, that's it. All right, okay. Camping in Norfolk.
We're going to do, boy, we're going to run out of time, but I don't guess we have any time left to do it.
We have no time limitations, except if the council's done. Okay, I mean, I don't think this is going to take very long. This is, these are just a couple of --
It's about two hours.
Dr. Whibley says, well, there's a lot of stuff we need to do, so, I don't think --
I think this is all good.
We're on vacation.
I'm happy to be back.
Okay, here we go, go ahead.
Okay, camping in Norfolk. This is quick. First, the definition of camping. I've been working with the city attorney's office on camping and what is camping, and this is the definition provided. Staying on property when it's past closing or overnight, erecting a tent or shelter, storing camping materials or personal belongings, sleeping or preparing to sleep and making a fire or cooking. That's what we are defining as camping. What brought this to the forefront or the discussion of camping is the fact that the Occupy Norfolk people, actually across the nation, but here also, raised the camping issue in our city as in other cities, and so, brought us back into discussion about what is camping and do we have it here. We have never authorized camping in Norfolk on city property. There is a large discussion about what is a First Amendment right, what can and cannot be done. Public property in particular, our parks, our traditional public forums, and they must be open for First Amendment activities. Typically, those are signs, speakers, parades, that type of activity. Camping in public parks has not been recognized by the courts as a First Amendment activity. It's, various courts have said different things across the nation, but it's not really been recognized as a First Amendment activity. Our city attorney's office is watching as the camping comes through the courts to see what might affect us. An ordinance will be coming to you that will recommend some things about camping. It clarifies that we do have a prohibition of camping in Norfolk. We haven't had, we haven't allowed it before, and it will clarify that. It makes camping a class-one misdemeanor. It would allow camping in several circumstances. It would allow camping for 24 hours only, for charitable fundraising event in the zoo and on the Wisconsin, the various programs that we have now with children in those two locations. It would allow camping on city properties that are leased or transferred to a third party. This was discussed in the committee, and the two examples that came up in that committee are the Girl Scout Camp and Camp Young Down in Chesapeake. And the ordinance also does not apply to the off-stand homelessness authorized activities and to camping for, or staying overnight in emergency shelters. That is --
Okay.
Committee in.
So, you'll bring in a move, is that next week, maybe?
That would be the next time, yeah, the 28th, yes.
So, the definition again was what, was it sleeping overnight? It's staying on property past closing or overnight.
And I'm sorry, I was looking at, what, class what, Miss Commuter?
One.
Class one. How are you going, go ahead, sorry.
For homeless people that sleep in stocky gardens?
Right, what are we doing?
I've had a long conversation with Sarah about that. We had the conversation today about that, and we talked about trying to find alternate places for them to sleep so that there's not, so that they wouldn't be staying on city property overnight, staying at churches or in other locations. That is an issue to try to work around.
Well, we need to work on that piece, because that ain't going to happen anymore.
Right, I know.
These people have been sleeping where they want to.
Yeah, I was just going to say. Holy smokes.
I mean, and you're just not, I mean, is it, maybe the city attorney can help us with that. It's one thing for one person to sleep on a bench.
Right.
Does that constitute camping or something? But I think a class one, Andy, you talk about it, that's pretty stiff.
It is.
That's a year in jail, man, right?
Yes, and we have it for items like trespass, but we don't see, except in the most exceptional circumstances, a judge giving the maximum. But we will bring back to you how we think best to deal with the homeless before the 28th, or on the 28th, before you have to vote on this.
But I will tell you what, trespassing, you will get a general to score, judge will load somebody up on trespassing.
90 days.
You will see them go to jail, and it will be for an extended period of time, and it just depends sometimes on the circumstances that trespass. But, especially if it's a second offense, can you imagine if we have a homeless person that's going to be a second offense of this, and then you've got a judge who says, well, fine, this, and we've got fine judges, don't get me wrong, but you may have a judge who decides, well, I'm going to socially fix things by saying, it's winter time, I'm just going to lock him up for 60 days until, or, or six months until the winter clears.
That becomes such an expensive proposition.
Yeah, but that's a really, really, not only expensive, but we're, it's almost a social type of, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, isn't that, that area right there at the underpass on 21st Street, isn't that a public park? You know, those --
City owned.
City owned. I mean, that, that isn't just sleeping there, people are camping. They're homeless people.
Oh, that piece up there, there's a --
Yes.
Just before Hampton Bowl.
Yeah, up on the right.
No, it's on Hampton, well, 21st and Hampton, yeah, yeah.
Can't we just, can't we just say it's trespassing in all public areas from such and such a time, such and such a time, and if people are there after that time, then they're trespassing, and then you deal with it that way, instead of doing it in the camping sense? You know, and then the, then the, it's just maybe dealt with a little bit differently than, I don't know, even then.
It's an option. I think that, given the Occupy movement, that this is regarded as the better practice, so that we do have the posted signs now on most public areas.
Right.
But given the nuances of making a trespassing case, that this may well serve us better. I think we're trying to manage something that's emerging here, and the people in Norfolk were well behaved, and so, the issues were virtually none. It was mostly positive experience, but it's not been the case throughout the country, so that there have been some serious issues, and that this is what we're seeing mostly come out in order to give us the ability to separate speech from camping, so that, let us tell you what we think would be a good option with respect to somebody not engaged in a First Amendment activity who we've been calling homeless, and just see if we can't do something better here than what we have for trespass. But that in a park setting right now, a homeless person would be eligible for first, for a class-one misdemeanor for trespass, and we're not bringing those sorts of charges, so there's a practicality to it as well.
So, stop asking.
But they're good questions, and I think that this will be improved if we're able to carve out the homeless from it.
Okay, okay. The plot.
The plot. Many people have been working on the plot for a long time, and I've sort of entered the scene at the, at the implementation stage. This has been going on for quite a while, and with many different actors in it. It was first proposed through some discussions at the Downtown Norfolk Council, inspired by the Roslyn up in Northern Virginia, Virginia. A group was put together of volunteers, and they came up with a creative way of dealing with the plot. It's a green project, and as you'll see, there's many materials that are being recycled for use in the plot. The site, I think everybody's pretty much aware of where it is, is Granbury and Main Street, it's the vacant parcel there, which was originally a development site, and --
Can you tell us what, how much of that parcel?
Yes, I have a map later on. It's basically the, this part down here, and the other part of it will be used for, most immediately, for the parking for op sale. I have a map, I'll show you. The parking for op sale when it comes in June, and then it'll be used for the lay-down area, the other part, lay-down area for the slope construction, the slope. I have a map later, and I can show you exactly where those are. This is the plot, it says laid out in design form. It has diagonal walkways going across it. There are trees put in, the tree planters. These trees are city trees, but they are trees that have been rubbed by deer, so they're still -- still okay trees. This is a temporary treatment of this property, and those trees will be fine for the temporary treatment of the property. There are some containers on end, which you'll see in a later slide. There's pavers, a, some bleachers, a small stage right here, so there can be some busking type activities or small things happening on that stage or in the area. There's a, some shade elements here and half of a basketball court, so it's got a little bit of everything. The thought is that it will be a place for people to gather, to pass through, and things to happen spontaneously in the, in the city while we're waiting for the next reincarnation of the site.
No camping, right?
See that truck there? Is that a sandwich truck or something?
There is a thought that there would be some street vendors, but we can't accommodate that right now. We're working towards getting our city regulations to accommodate a, to street vendors down on that edge of the side.
Well, you have to be careful. You've got a lot of people who, you know, who pay rent to have restaurants all over that area.
I know.
I mean, so I'd be, let's talk about that.
That's part of the discussion that's going on.
You've got the Southern Arcade, and you've got across the street. I mean, I don't, we don't wanna compete with people who are long-term.
That is part of the discussion that's going on between the city and DNC.
Although I think some of the people that had proposed to have these trucks were actually long-term, you know, vendors already in the, you know, already lease area.
But I think they've already, for example, I remember a conversation Stanley had with him about strategically located, we have certain areas that are for vendors. And I don't know if that meets the criteria.
Well, this right now is not something that can be permitted at this point in time. So the discussions are going on when, how many, where, under what conditions, all those types of discussions are, are happening now with DNC. There's a lot of reused materials. This would be asphalt that we've taken up from other places during construction of other things and put into the tree pits, so they would be crumpled up and be a covering around the tree pits like this or like this. The whole, one of the whole focuses of the plot is to reuse materials. It's a temporary place, and it's a gathering place for people in the city. These are, these are planters that were used originally at the Granby Mall. They are in storage, and they will be brought out and recycled.
Amazing.
And put into the...
Do you still have those things?
The plot, we still have them.
Hard to believe.
They're turned up in different places.
Haven't heard words corner for a while.
They just kinda reappear.
Here are the trees. Here's how it becomes a deer-rubbed tree. They have scarring on the bark, and there's the thought that maybe some of them could actually become art on the plot. There is some seating coming out of Scope that would be used for that amphitheater, that little amphitheater that I showed you with the stage. So that's another reused material. And then when the boathouse was taken down recently, there's some, as Kathy says, there's some beautiful timbers, and you can see the size of them, some beautiful timbers, and those are being refurbished, reused to benches for the area. The shipping containers are a, a symbol of this area and of Norfolk, and those would be, some of those would be put on end, three of them would be put on end at the corner of the two streets as public art.
What's on them right there?
They have two, they have signs on these two sides. One of them is like the story of the plot, how it came together, and it's recycled materials and all that. And the other side has sort of the elements of the plot and the sponsors, because they're doing fundraising to be able to afford various things that they are buying for the plot.
What city is this? Or is this fiction?
This is fiction.
Okay.
Here's the, here's the site itself. So Main Street. So the plot Phase 1 is, here's the corner, Granby and Main. The Phase 1 is here, and that's where the, the containers would be on end in the diagonal design that I showed you earlier. We need to have these two pieces for op sale, for parking for security vehicles and security during op sale. And then when op sale is over, this would become the rest of the plot with a half basketball down here, and that would be the lay-down area for the slope. This is how it's, we're still on some discussions. In fact, Kathy and I are now talking almost every day on this, but this is how it's basically coming through. The downtown Norfolk council will be doing the oversight, the repair, the maintenance. They're looking into providing lights, the furniture, the benches, insurance, and they will own the timbers and the sail shades. The city is gonna be, any special event that wants to come on the site will be coming through the city's normal special event process, will pay for the electricity, and then will retain ownership of the items that are listed. There have been several steps that we've completed. It's been reviewed by Urban Design Associates. The building official has looked at the structural drawings of the containers, and that's been approved. There's two more steps to that. They have to do soils testing, and then once the containers are put in place, we have to re-inspect to make sure that they're safe. Those two pieces we have yet to do. They have gotten, the plot has gotten its certificate of appropriateness through the Design Commission and the Planning Commission. Here are the pieces that we are, that remain for us to complete. The, developing the right of entry, that should be coming to you at your February 28th meeting. Once they have the right of entry, they can go on-site and do the soils testing and start laying out the diagonal lines to see how it will all fit. When they went through the process with the planning commission, the planning commission asked that they come back with their signage plan and their lighting plan, because they didn't have those at the time. Those would need to come back through and get the certificate of appropriateness, and we've been talking about the timing for that through the Design Review and Planning Commission. We need to get the details of the ground lease, including things like insurance, together, who has oversight at what time. Then, of course, it needs to be constructed, and we would need to have the final inspections go through, in particular the shipping containers, make sure that they're stable.
Are we gonna see what, at the end of the day, what it's gonna look like after you've plugged in all of those things about containers and, I mean, something more than, what we saw was just conceptual, I think?
Yes.
That little map you got there?
And this.
But we can see exactly what it's gonna look like? I mean, I think that's what the council should see.
Do you want it in sketch or on the land? I've talked with...
Just however we can make a reasoned judgment, other than, I see trees and stuff like that. I'd like to see what it's exactly going to look like.
Okay.
Where everything is gonna be placed. So before we say, I mean, that's reasonable, I'm not gonna, that's a very important piece of property, and I know we've gone a long way with these folks, and I think that's wonderful. I'm all for it. I just think, you know, somebody's gonna, I mean, that's our decision about, is this laid out the way we want it? And quite, it's not the manager's decision. I think the council needs to say, yeah, this is okay, we like this. But I can't tell by looking at that exactly what that site's gonna look like.
Yeah, I would emphasize, Mayor Council...
We probably won't change a thing, but I think we need to be able to see it, because...
And it's temporary. I know Amy said it once, but it's temporary, temporary, temporary.
You know, we already have an RFP from somebody who put an RFP out on Waterside to help develop that site. I mean, this has to be, they have to know, and we've been down that road several times where things start out temporary, they develop a constituency, and all of a sudden it's, it's not temporary. So I think this is wonderful, and I'm all, I'm all for it. I wanna see exactly what it's gonna look like, what this basketball court's gonna look like and all that other stuff before Marcus and Anthony are out there and everybody else fish caught shooting. But, okay, fair enough, Mr. Manager, and you're gonna recommend this to us, right?
Definitely.
This comes with your approval?
Yes.
I would thank you, Ann, for working on this. I am very excited about it. I understand your concerns, but I think it's a fabulous example of our citizens coming together and trying to provide a solution that the city on its own couldn't do. And I think that's exactly the way we're gonna go. I recently was in Christ Church, where the entire downtown was destroyed, and they have rebuilt a shopping center entirely made out of containers, and it is very attractive and very neat, so I think it's gonna be a super way to do it.
Okay, what's next?
I think we have one more. There's an item that's coming on the 28th that has a, not a six-oh vote, so in the tradition of bringing something to you before you have to vote on it.
All right, how you doing?
Other, I guess just introduce myself. I'm George Umwood. I'm your Assistant Director of Planning, and actually, today is my six-month anniversary this time. Thrilled to be here.
Where have you been for six months? Where does Frank hide you?
Grooming, he's been grooming.
Okay, great.
Meredith Investments is a special exception request, hopefully I'll figure this out, is a special exception request to do used merchandise sales, and it comes to the council with not a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission, and so because of that, we're gonna give you a bit of an explanation. Property is located on Princess Anne Boulevard. It is in front of the Foxhole Neighborhood. It is known as the Bay Square Shopping Center. It's zoned car to commercial, C2, as is the property to the west. This area is actually sort of a commercial node in the, you have, in this area, commercial and across the street, commercial. And that's, the request is for used merchandise. The conditions would be the hours are limited to nine to nine daily. There would be no outdoor storage, no outdoor display, no outdoor receipt of or drop-off of used merchandise for sale, and there would be no merchandise sold by auction. The reason I mentioned the commercial node is that, for some reason, the current general plan designates the entire area as low-density residential, even though a good portion of the area is already developed and have, already developed commercially and has been for a number of years. The proposed Plan Norfolk 2030 designation for this site and the surrounding area is for commercial, and there are no similar uses within 1,000 feet. Foxhole Neighborhood has provided a letter of support. The applicant appeared in support. There was no undue scope in opposition at the Planning Commission. The administration is recommending approval of this because it is consistent with the zoning ordinance, there is a lack of similar uses in the area and because of neighborhood support. Planning Commission recommended approval and a five-two vote. Those that voted in favor stated the neighborhood's support and the consistency with zoning ordinance. The two members of the Planning Commission who opposed it simply oppose this use anywhere in the city and therefore voted against it.
And you, merchandise, what kind? Are they selling clothes, tires, shoes? What are they selling?
It's, my understanding, first of all, this is a speculative use. They do not have a user. This is to allow the shopping center owner to potentially lease the unit out for used merchandise sales. It would not include tires. That is a separate category. So we're talking about household appliances, clothing, and those sorts of things, and the sort of thing you see at the CHKD thrift shops and those sorts of things.
So why are we changing it if they don't have a potential tenant?
The owner has, has applied for the special exception.
Does a flea market fit in that zoning?
No, sir.
No?
Yes, sir, or no, sir?
No, sir.
No.
Well, you could...
I'm just saying, could that end up being a flea market in that?
Not, not with the special exception in his request. It could not end up being a flea market.
So they couldn't have multiple vendors inside?
It has to be a single vendor, or a single proprietor.
I mean, not a single proprietor, a single user. But in other words, one guy can own it and lease out little spaces.
Right. No, this is not a consignment shop where you have different vendors inside or flea market. This would be a, a single operator of the establishment, as we understand.
So how would this differ from... How would this differ from the many, you know, like the King's Daughters groups and things like that? Is this the same thing as...
As far as I know. I mean, it would be operated although...
So the opponents on Planning Commission were against this model, although we have similar situations all over the city?
Well, thrift shops carry a little bit of a negative connotation.
But I mean, we, we approve them all the time.
We do it in certain areas and we don't.
What's the last time?
About four kids.
Remembering the one for four kids.
What about the consignment shop on 21st Street?
Yeah, what is it?
We just approved that last year.
But it, right, but it was with strong business and neighborhood support and things.
I think I feel a little bit better about it, knowing what they are anticipating coming there.
Because in my mind, there's a difference between a thrift shop and a consignment store.
Yeah.
A big difference.
And I just feel better about it if I knew what they were looking for or what they, what the potential, what it was gonna be, you know?
Here we have a two-week lead, where you can get some more information before the 28th.
I think I'd like that.
Sure. Okay. Okay, well, before we go into closed session, because we're gonna go through the boards, I just wanted to ask the councils, okay, on a couple of things. We've talked for some time about the importance of veterans to our community and about the importance of trying to address issues that might be important to them, obviously. The defense dollars are now something 40-plus percent of our economy. A couple of veterans groups have suggested that we form a Military Veterans Advisory Board, pretty, you know, to advise the council on issues that might be, you know, maybe Richmond's is doing something for veterans that we're not doing, or maybe Annapolis is or something like that. It just, it's a board that would meet on a, we can decide on an every couple of month or, or every quarter or something like that. I've asked Breck to draft a model ordinance. We're not gonna fill it out today, obviously. I just wanted, and that's the reason I'm saying this in open session, because, and there are slots on this board, we can, we can talk about it a lot, for various groups, like somebody from the National Guard, somebody from the Veterans of Foreign Wards, but anyway, VFW club. But you guys just take a look at this, and next time we do appointments, I would like to mention in my State of the City speech that we've agreed to do this, Veterans Affairs. I think a lot of other communities have. I don't know how we've gone so long and not had something like this. Marcus, is your office hiring a physician?
Yes.
On this? Okay. There's, there's one other. Virginia Beach has a Military Economic Development Board where they have some, they have relatively high-ranking retired members of the military, like an admiral, like, you know, or flag officers or their, like, who would advise the council on positions we should take on aircraft carriers or if they're aware of the military wanting to move a certain mission or command from San Diego or, you know, or, you know, from Somalia, that we have these people who can advise the manager and the council on, you know, what we should do. I mean, they could, I guess, report, be staffed by the Economic Development Department, and then try to assist us with writing letters or, I mean, what we basically did, I asked Breck to take a look at what the Virginia Beach Advisory, it's called the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have looked at the Virginia Beach ordinance and just tailored it after that. They have a lot of people on theirs. This is a little smaller, I think. And I know that would give us two new boards, but seems to me our economy's become so heavily weighted towards the defense spending that this is a voice we need to hear from and advice we need to get. And... And we'll talk in the future about who ought to sit on these boards. Okay? Oh, yeah, this is, yeah, this is completely voluntary. But, I mean, they have people at Virginia Beach, in this board, this Economic Development Board, who absolutely know what's going on in the Pentagon. I mean, they have friends who they were on active duty with, who they are in conversation with regularly, you know, I mean, well, they're, yeah, there's all sorts, there's shipyards, there's all sorts of stuff they could help us with. And it just is, it's another way to include our military friends in what's going on in the city as well. Okay? Was there anything else?
Is there anything?
Just those two?
Is there anything in here about, when we talk about economic development and the military, we have quite a few veterans that own businesses and possibly working with those.
I think that's what that advisory board would.
Okay, okay.
But if you, when you read this, if you have any thoughts or any questions or suggestions, feed them back to Breck and he will put them in the, in the ordinance. This is a first shot at it, okay? And then, you know, I mean, you know, Andy, there's all those guys in the VFW clubs and all them, you know, give them a way to come down here. You know? Yeah. American Legion, I mean, there's the Fleet Reserve. In fact, it was the guy out of the Fleet Reserve who really has been talking to me a long time about, why don't you have an advisory commission?
I think in the past, you know, it's been, I mean, frankly, the military, the Navy have been so integrated into the city anyhow in the past. That's probably one reason why it hasn't been and God's honest truth. But now I think that we look at the, the finances are such that they may not always be as integrated as they are today, that, you know, aircraft carriers are moving there and there, that we need to be able to use every bit of pull that we can.
Sure. We wanna say the best place in the world for the military to do business and this is part of it. Okay, all right, so then you wanna read that?
Remove the members of council assembly and close meeting on February 7, 2012 at 4:40 PM. 10-4, motion to City Hall.